Number fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. We are live in the BHS auditorium, also via Zoom broadcast. Ms. Harris, may I please have a roll call? Here.
Here.
President.
Here.
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 Thank you very much. This time I would like to ask Mr. Heller to lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance. This time I'll entertain a motion to approve this evening's agenda.
Summoned. First second.
Motion kiss, Ms. Stock, who was second down there? Ms. Gordon? Were you one of them, Ms. Gordon?
Yes.
I will give to Ms. Gordon. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We will begin our special presentations, starting with Brandywine High School. I understand we have Bobby Bear filling in for Evan Gant. If we want the students up on, if you could go to the top stage, please.
Hi, I'm Bobby Bear. I'm filling for Evan. He's sick right now. So a couple of the things that's happened at Brandywine since the last meeting. We had our homecoming game. It was against friends. We had a hard loss, but we played well. Football has had a pretty good season in terms of, you know, amount of like student section. Terms of wins and losses, we are defeated in every game. But, you know, our football team is still, uh, still have a lot of, um, you know, I don't know, good, uh, good spirit, I would say. Cross-country just went to states this past Saturday. A lot of them did well. I know almost everyone ran below a twenty-one minute five K. And I know Angelina, who's a freshman, she placed fourteenth in the state, I believe. Soccer boys went to, uh, they went to the playoffs against McCain last week and won, and then they played, uh, Caravel last Saturday and lost. Volleyball also made the playoffs, lost to Tower Hill. We had our homecoming, which was a very big success for Brandywine. We had over five hundred kids, which is our biggest one in the years that I have been here, and I'm a senior. We made a lot of money for the class of two thousand twenty-three. Huge success. All the feedback is great from the students. We had a pep rally as well. That was a lot of fun. It got kids very excited to be in school. Everyone was happy to do it, especially since COVID. It was our first one since, and it went very well. You know, everyone was up on their feet playing games, and we actually ran overtime because we had a lot of fun. So the bell rang and we weren't done, which was pretty fun. We had hallway decorations. This year the seniors won. It was Candyland. This was like games. I'm not sure what other classes had, but there was a lot of participants. People were here until like nine o'clock doing hallway decorations, which was very good to see. We have a couple of sales. So for the class of two thousand twenty-three, we have a pajama pants sale. And our BSU has a pretzel sale Monday, today, tomorrow, and Wednesday, and Thursday they'll be given out. That's as far as the sales that I know of. Spear Week, we had a large number of participants, a little back of some feedback from what we had chose, which we can do better for next year, but it was overall a pretty big success. Our college admissions, a lot of kids are getting into college right now. We've had UD, Alabama, and like, I don't know, maybe thirty other colleges reply. We have like stickers in our C three to put on Chromebooks, so you'll see seniors in the hallway with their Chromebooks and just college application stickers on their Chromebook, which is great. It's the end of the first marking period, so kids are getting their enderums back, and since last week we only had two days. It's still hard for kids to catch up on work, but teachers have been very flexible in that, which is good to know. We have the winter ball from our juniors, which will be coming up. They're still trying to decide when and what, like what they'll do. We're still trying for that at the next student council meeting. Uh, we had Fall Fest, which was, it was a pretty good turnout. Could have been better, but, um, it was still a big success as well. Ms. Reggio's E-Hall Pass is working very well. Uh, we have had no fights, or at least ones that have been taking videos of, if we had their scuffles. So far, it's really good. So kudos to her for that. But there's like no hallway traffic. Like you can stay in class and not get distracted. It's great. So now we have the start of wrestling, basketball, girls and boys, indoor track, swimming, and cheerleading for this winter season. And that about sums it up.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Bobby, you did a very good job. I did attend that pep rally. I was able to get some coverage, and you did a very good job with the MC.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear your, uh, the student response to the E-Hall Pass to, you know, see when changes are made within the school or by the administration, to hear the engagement from the students and, you know, know that they are perceiving a positive change. I think that's, that's very important, so I'm very glad to hear that.
Yeah, at first, a lot of kids were like, oh, no, what is this? But, you know, they had to realize, like, this is like the only way we can, like, actually be a school, because it was not really a school, quote unquote, beforehand, and this is what school's supposed to be like, like it has rules. So a lot of kids are now realizing, like, holy crap, this is actually pretty good.
Yep, and to see the positive response, I think that's great. So thank you. And also glad to see that pep rallies are back and that, you know, students find those to be fun, engaging activities.
Mr. Scrobatt, I'd also like to comment on the number of colleges that came to visit. And I know that the guidance team here at Brandywine High School has done an amazing job. And I'd like to come back at a future board meeting and present on a model that they've implemented that's showing outstanding results.
Thank you. Next up, we have Concord High School, Mohammed Uden and Mira Ratnagiri.
All right. Good evening, School District Board. My name is Mohammed Uden, and I'm Concord High School Student Council President. Tonight, I'm accompanied by Mira Ratnagiri, my treasure, and we're here to try and, you know, update you on what Concord High School has been up to. So in this past month of October, we've been very busy. Just recently, we finished our homecoming and an astonishing seven hundred and fifty students attended. Thanks to the staff and other faculty for making a fun, memorable, and especially a safe dance, uh, you know, event. A safe event. All right, so something that Concord High School has implemented is a new phone policy. This phone policy requires students to place their phones in a holder and are prohibited to use it during class time. At the end, at the conclusion of this class time, students are allowed to, uh, students are allowed to take their phones, but during the class time, we are prohibited to use them. This, this, or sorry, this policy was very, very, uh, new, and it's a very absurd thing, some may say. But according to a survey that we conducted on Concord High School teachers, an astonishing forty-five respondents said that a hundred, sorry, forty-five respondents said that a hundred, that the student engagement was very, very improved upon. Okay. Let me take it in. So we had forty-five respondents to our survey, and an astonishing one hundred percent of them has stated that has stated that the student engagement overall has incredibly increased. Upon this, we have also had an E-Hall Pass system implemented. This is a well-known system that restricts the number of students that, uh, go into the halls and the amount or the time allotted to, to stay in the halls. According to the same survey that we conducted, student teachers, or sorry, Concord High School teachers have also stated that they've seen a drop of frequency in the amount of students leaving the classroom, and also the time period of which they stayed, or which they stay out of the classroom. Essentially, these rules may be very absurd to the ears of the school district board. But I personally, as students, we think that this has become our norm, and it's become, and it's helped us create a solid, engaging, and a stronger school community.
So in addition to student engagement and everything that Mohammed was saying, Concord students, we wanted to highlight how we've been helping our local community and giving back. So through our Concord Cares program, we connected with the Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition to raise money for their cause. So from bake sales to selling T-shirts and bracelets, our clubs, organizations, and even sports teams have raised over four thousand dollars just in the month of October for this cause. So in addition to Concord Cares, our Interact Club, which is a community-based club, has supported organizations such as the Delaware Humane Society through a donation drive, stockings for soldiers, and flags for vets, all in the month of October. Just last week, Concord students assembled over three hundred snowman soup packages, which are little packages that make hot chocolate for soldiers overseas as a part of the Stockings for Soldiers organization. And additionally, we sought help from our Concord community to raise money for flags for vets or flags for heroes, in which we were able to honor three of our staff members who are veterans in the ceremony that was held last Friday. This coming week, we're, Concord's National Honor Society and Interact Club are organizing a Thanksgiving drive in partnership with the Food Bank of Delaware. And to conclude our week, our senior class board is organizing a Powder Puff Tournament to bring our Concord community together and have a little healthy competition. Continuing into our holiday season, we're bringing back our Breakfast with Santa on December tenth to raise money and spread some holiday cheer. And we have had a busy two months with these new policies, school spirit events, and community service, and we hope to continue this energy throughout the year. Thank you. Any questions?
I'm just excited to see the level of student partnership with the teachers and the fact that you guys did a survey to gauge the impact of a policy that was, you know, met with resistance and seemed so far out of the norm to, to, to partner and be engaged in that, and then to see that there was truly the, the benefit outweighed whatever initial discomfort or resistance there may have been. I, I think that's fantastic, and I, and I hope everyone, you know, keeps that up through, throughout the year and, you know, any, any initiatives that come around. So congrats.
I have a question. To the students, did you, who initiated the survey?
So I, I created a Google form. It was non-biased, had, did not have any leading questions. And I sent it out to our, initially our teachers that we had, and then we sent it out to our student council advisor, who then distributed it to the rest of the student, or sorry, the teacher body.
And have you considered a survey for the students?
We have not. We just wanted to gauge and kind of get answers to how the teachers are feeling. And we do, as students, I can say on behalf of our student body, that our classes, the senior class has been, uh, very open-minded to it and have been very accepting to this phone policy.
That is what, that's what we hear too. I just, I was wondering if you were considering doing a survey for students. Thank you for doing that.
Yep, of course. Thank you for your question.
And as always, just impressive, the number of community service events, like the ones you rattled off tonight would have been enough for an entire year, and it was just October. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, and certainly last but not least, Mount Pleasant High School, Dylan Kim and May Wong.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the Brandywine School District Board and members of the Brandywine School District Community. My name is Dylan Kim. This is May Wong, and we are the representatives of Mount Pleasant High School. The day before Halloween, on October thirtieth, the president's own United States Marine Band performed a concert at Mount Pleasant High School. It was a two-hour performance that included famous marches by John Philip Sousa, like the Liberty Bell and the Stars and Stripes Forever. This concert also included pieces such as Emblems by Aaron Copland and America the Beautiful, Beautiful by Samuel Augustus Ward. At the end of the concert, a medley of the songs of the branches of the United States Armed Forces called A Salute to the Armed Forces of the United States of America was played, and it was a fantastic experience that the community as a whole thoroughly enjoyed.
On November sixth, we hosted an open house in our On November sixth, um, we hosted an open house in our school's gym with representatives of the various clubs and programs available at Mount Pleasant High School, including drama, radio, robotics, JROTC, culinary, and our international baccalaureate program. The JROTC program at Mount has been hard at work with recruiting and public outreach, having visited P.S. Dupont Middle School to deliver an informative assembly, Cali Middle School to raise the flag and present colors at their Veterans Day Ceremony, and presented colors for the Brandywine Hundred Rotary Clubs annual Veterans Day cer- ceremony. They have also served our community by helping the St. Helena's Church set up their bazaar. We appreciate their involvement in our community and the recognition of the sacrifices that the veterans have made to defend our nation.
Our National Honor Society program is holding a canned food drive where each class, so nine, nine through twelve, they compete each, against each other to see whoever donates the most non-perishable canned food. And whatever class donates the most canned food, they actually get to watch the staff members get pied, which includes our principal, Ms. Lacy. And the top five students that donate the most canned food actually get to pie the staff members in the faces. So this is a very innovative fundraising effort, and I'm sure the students are very enthusiastic about this initiative. Now, our drama department is ready and excited to deliver their fall production She Kills Monsters, so Dungeons and Dragons theme, I believe. This upcoming weekend, on the nights of November seventeenth, so this Thursday through the nineteenth, which is this Saturday, and they'll each be at seven PM. After their hard work during the entire school year so far, you're excited to see what they have prepared and recognize their efforts to continue to cultivate the arts in our community.
Our fall sports season is winding down. Last Thursday, at the Green Knights Football Team's last game at Milford Senior High School, we were victorious against the Milford Buccaneers for a score of twenty-eight to fourteen. The game was filled with excitement, and our team's ninety-nine yard dash touchdown within the last it was quite the send-off for our varsity football team.
We are proud to have represented our school within the community through our services and performances. With that being said, as always, the Mount Pleasant High School community would like to thank the school board for their continued efforts to provide a high-quality education for us all. Thank you, and we are open to questions at this time.
Where was the drop-off for the food drive?
Uh, to the front lobby, sir.
Front hall?
For the school.
Great. Again, more all three high schools, and certainly Mount Pleasant, you've highlighted some of the, the community engagement efforts that I'm sure some of you recognize the importance of that, and I hope that everyone that participates in the school will see that giving back to your community is something that will, you know, fulfill you for the rest of your life. So thank you for all those activities surrounding community engagement, sir. Any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Next up, we have some special presentations in recognition to honor some special individuals at Springer Middle, as well as our Bush E-Cap centers. And helping Ms. Delithia McIntyre, Mr. Akima Wicker.
Good evening to Presidents Scrobott, Vice President Heller, awesome, awesome members of the board, as well as all those of you here tonight in the audience. Mr. Wicker and I have the distinguished privilege of sharing some information about some of our superstars in education that live right here in Brandywine School District. So I would like to invite a few folks to come up and join us on the stage. I'm going to say a few things about them and share with the board one or two highlights about each, and then invite their respective principals to give you some more intel on why they are such superstars for Brandywine. So if I could please first have our Bush E-Cap recipients this evening. Ms. Erica Gunter is the Teacher of the Year for Bush E-Cap, as well as Kristen Reed, the Educator Support Professional of the Year, and Anne Clovier, their Behavioral Health Specialist and Professional of the Year. That is a new award that was added in, so our celebration is growing, which we are very, very happy with. Do you all want to just stand right on that side? So one thing that, Anne, Haley, it's Watson. There you are. Come on up, Principal Watson. Thank you. So with Ms. Gunter, who's on the end, she is now amongst our administrative team. She is actually the Assistant Principal. So she was last year voted Teacher of the Year for Bush and E-Cap. She's a special educator, worked in both programs, but is of note for her work in promoting recruitment and retention of diverse applicants and working with those teachers to empower them and equip them to do great things with some very young, very precious people that we get to serve and support. And I am so proud that one thing I noted, she was listed in Delaware Today Magazine as the two thousand twenty-one Top Teacher, recognized as one of sixteen notable educators in the state of Delaware making an impact on education. Congratulations to you. And next we have Ms. Anne Clovier, and Ms. Clovier is the Behavioral Health Professional of the Year. She is a school psychologist for us in Brandywine, started with us as an intern, stayed and was hired by some very wise folks that saw many, many talents. And what I thought was notable, besides the fact that she's been with us for nineteen years, is the fact that she was inspired to become a school psychologist through her work with children with autism while she was in graduate school, and more recently, she's been working on conscious discipline. So doing discipline different. Congratulations to you. So glad. And finally, the Educator Support Professional of the Year, Ms. Kristen Reed. Ms. Reed is a parent educator, but she is a parent educator with impact, because she set up some things, and I won't steal the ball, because I'm sure Haley's going to mention a few. But one that I thought was really cool was the fact that you offered booing for colleagues in the building, and they got treats during the Halloween season each day from their secret boo partner. And then she also did in March, a secret shamrock where there were treats every day. So please feel free to stop by District Office. We love treats for any season. But for all of you, you are superstars, and we thank you so much. And we now invite Haley to share some additional commentary.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Haley Watson. I'm the principal at the Bush Early Education Center and E-Cap Program. Some of you might recognize Ms. Kristen Reed. She actually, uh, Superintendent Holer came into her classroom last year during the pandemic and helped cover classes with her. So she's a fantastic asset to our program. They had a day of teaching together. So Kristen is, was our, selected as our Parent Professional of the Year. She truly is an asset to our building. She's such a positive force. Like Ms. Delithia mentioned, she, she heads our social committee and provides lots of opportunities to promote positive culture in the building and just promotes staff interaction and collaboration. She also demonstrates that same interaction with students. She's really committed to reaching children where they are, understanding their strengths and needs, and really working to support them. We have some students that give us some struggle, and she's very willing to support them in any way that she can. She's currently working on her RBT certification. She also works really hard to foster fam, uh, relationships with families as well, so she's a great asset to our team. Ms. Anna Clovier is our school psychologist. We are very grateful to have her. She has a wealth of knowledge. Like Delithia mentioned, she works, her, a lot of experience with autism and working to support those kids with challenging behaviors. She works collaboratively, collaboratively with our staff members, very hands-on and willing to jump in and support wherever needed. She provides a lot of resources related to conscious discipline, which is our tier-one support we are using to support social skills in preschool and advocates for students' needs. She's willing to think outside of the box and to come at problems with flexibility when things aren't working, so we really appreciate her support. And then Ms. Erica Gunter was our Teacher of the Year for last year and has moved into the Assistant Principal role. She also brings a lot of experience and knowledge to her position. She was selected, uh, she was nominated by parents and staff members last year, and then was selected through our selection committee because of her commitment to her families, to her students, and also as a leader in the building. She's done a lot of work with us through our Equity Committee. She also really works with families and children to support their needs. She comes at students very calm, patiently, and she's able to support them through play-based learning and helping them to meet their needs where they are. We're proud to have all of these members on our team. We welcome you all to come visit us and see them in action at Bush.
And if you all are able to stay after we do our announcement, typically, once we get to superintendent's comments, he likes to offer some additional feedback for you. So if you're able to, and then we'll do pictures after that. If I can now invite up from Springer Middle School, Principal Tracy Woodson, Carol Murgera, and Carrie Ferret. So congratulations, ladies, for being the superstars at Springer Middle School. And in the spirit of Thanksgiving, we are very thankful for all of your contributions, to which Mr. Woodson will share shortly with specifics around your school, but just again, wanted to note that Carolyn is a special ed teacher. She is the Teacher of the Year for Springer Middle School. And she's also a special ed department chair, which can have a awful lot of responsibility and work behind it. She serves as a liaison between herself, teachers, and the administration of the building, trying to ensure best practices, best services for our students with some of the greatest needs. So thank you so much for what you do for our students at Springer. And then Carrie Ferret is the Behavioral Health Specialist of the Year. She is also a school social worker. And what I noticed in her paperwork when it was submitted, and actually I'll just read it to you really quickly. It says, "After graduating, Carrie embarked on a career path that would later span twenty-one years in the criminal justice field. Through her work with both Legal, uh, Legal Aid, I'm sorry, Society of New York and the Office of Defense Services in Delaware, she saw the collateral consequences of educational gaps, which included undereducation of those with learning disabilities, high attendance issues, and some other dropout-related rates and concerns." And so she decided to take that knowledge and that passion and turn it into providing supports and resources for families. And we are so very honored that both of you are providing those services in Brandywine School District. Principal Woodson.
Good evening, everyone. President Scrobott, Vice President Jason Heller, Superintendent Mr. Holer, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to both congratulate and recognize three of Springer Middle School's outstanding school leaders. Springer Middle School Teacher of the Year, Ms. Carolyn Murgera. Springer Middle School's Educator Support Professional of the Year. Ms. Jill Robinson, who is not with us this evening. And lastly, Springer Middle School's Behavioral Health Professional of the Year, Ms. Carrie Ferret. Please allow me to begin by introducing Ms. Carolyn Murgera. She's here with her family, her children. Ms. Murgera is a ten-year special education teacher who has earned the right to be the Special Education Department Chairwoman. Not because of any other reason, but because she has a sincere commitment and clear dedication to the neediest of Springer students. to the neediest of Springer students. Her colleagues say that she is now standing mathematics co-teacher. Every day Carolyn comes to the classroom thoroughly prepared and eager to teach. Carolyn's planning and preparedness and ability to engage all students in the classroom allows her the opportunity to capture student interest and motivate even the most resistant learners. Carolyn is a model of professionalism at all time. This is reflected in the respectful manner in which she interacts with students and teachers. Her consistent use of instructional routines gives students the confidence to tackle math on a daily basis. Overall, Carolyn's desire to teach demonstrates her dedication to her students and her colleagues. Her consistency, approachability, and willingness to go above and beyond makes her an outstanding math co-teacher. For these reasons and for so many more, Ms. Carolyn Murgera was nominated and selected by her colleagues as Springer Middle School's Teacher of the Year. Congratulations. And though she's not here, ask any school principal and they will tell you that the Building Secretary runs the building. For over twenty years, Jill Robinson has manned the phones, completed resonate, or registrations, diligently made certain that each year's unit count were done correctly and on time, managed and ordered student cum files from schools across the country, from Boston to California and Minnesota to Florida. She does so with grace, kindness, and professionalism, unless she managed to get her angry, and then all bets are off. Mrs. Jill Robinson Sullivan is not here tonight. On October tenth, on her night when she and her husband were celebrating her birthday, Jill was standing on the stairways or staircase holding her dog leash, and unfortunately, the dog aggressively pulled her and she fell and broke her hip. Ms. Robinson is expected to return later in December. My entire administrative team and all of my teachers look forward to Jill's return, as she truly is our Educator Support Person of the Year. The office and our building is not the same without her. Last, but certainly not least, I am extremely proud to introduce Ms. Carrie Ferret, Springer Middle School's Behavior Health Professional of the Year. Simply put, there is no better person at her job than Carrie Ferret. To be perfectly honest, I first met Carrie one year ago, after she had been in the building for about two weeks. She entered my weekly administrative meeting unannounced. When I asked, "Who are you?", she says, "My name is Carrie Ferret." I say, "What do you do?" She says, "I'm a social worker." I said, "So you work here at Springer?", and she said, "Yes", and "I work part-time at PS", and I said, "Great." She says, "Who are you?", said, "I'm Dr. Woodson, the principal." Ladies and gentlemen, that is how you start a great professional relationship. At that, at least that's how Carrie and I have come to work with each other. Carrie has been a great resource since she started at Springer a year ago. She is tireless, dogged, and does not take no for an answer. She brings a wealth of knowledge and experience from the social worker perspective to help guide students and families in need. A resume working in the field, time working at the AG's office, time with the FS, and on and on and on. She is a pavement pounder who gets more done out of the trunk of her car than anyone else I know. In closing, Carrie is a professional, a pleasure to work with, and always willing to get involved with our students and their families. I am extremely pleased to know that Carrie Ferret is a Springer Bulldog in every sense of the word. Tonight, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen, for allowing me to eat this evening to introduce just three of Springer's finest.
Thank you to all of our educators recognized tonight. Thank you for all you do for our students, for our school district, and by extension for our community. Thank you. And that will take us to our Superintendent's report. Mr. Holer?
President Scrobott, Vice President Heller, members of the Board, and audience members. It's been another busy month filled with many amazing moments for our students and staff. Want to begin this evening by addressing the water testing that is taking place in all public schools across the state of Delaware. Right now, local legislators and public health officials are hosting a virtual town hall forum about the water testing initiative. A flyer was sent home today with all BSD students about the event. We also sent an email this afternoon with information attached as a reference. As a district, we are working collaboratively with the Department of Education and the Division of Public Health on this initiative. We also sent a communication to all of our families on Friday regarding this water sampling project. If you didn't receive it, you can find it under our Family Communications section on our district website homepage. Like to thank Mr. John Reed and our Facilities Department for the quick attention with the handful of fixtures identified as being suspect across the district. Those identified late last week have been shut off until we learn of next steps from the EPA, DOE, and DPH. On behalf of the entire Brandywine School District, thank you to our veterans. There's so much more to educating students than math, reading, and the plethora of content taught in our schools. Equally important is the teaching of citizenry and the freedom that we enjoy thanks to the preservation of democratic rule. Over the last few days, our schools have participated in a variety of Veterans Day celebrations, paying tribute to those whose service allows today's generations to enjoy the same freedoms as their forefathers. At Forward Elementary, the students traveled to Forward Manor to host a special performance for the residents. Residents were delighted to see the students and listen to their performance. Many of the residents are also veterans and shared how meaningful the visit was to them. Springer Middle School hosted their Veterans Day Celebration last week, which included an assembly with twenty veterans and their spouses from all five branches of the military in attendance. Springer students submitted the names of family members who had served. Members of the Springer Social Studies and Music Departments created the program and selected the patriotic music to play. An Italian middle school, the school hosted a special breakfast for veterans and invited Mount Pleasant High School's JROTC for a special flag ceremony. The event also included a special student music performance. It's been refreshing to see the understanding and respect these events have generated among our students. For example, enjoy this short video from Tally's Veterans Day recognition. Let's take a look.
Today, we held our Veterans Day Celebration, which was a large concert, which honored guests from the Delaware Veterans Post One, a local U.S. Marine group, as well as some of our Tally students whose family members joined us as well. And the concert was held by our eighth grade band, our eighth grade orchestra, and our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade chorus students. Every year to start our Veterans Day Celebration, we take students outside and we let them see what a flag raising ceremony would look like. Today, and most years, we have the students from the Mount Pleasant High School Junior ROTC program who come. And they do both the flag raising, and then at the beginning of our ceremony, they bring the colors in and they hold the colors for us while we say the pledge and we sing the National Anthem, and then they post those for us. So the students kind of get to see a little bit of military action during the day. So they kind of understand what it is we're celebrating.
My name is Frank Dawson, retired Sergeant Major from the United States Army. This was my first opportunity to join my comrades in arms from the Honor Guard to enjoy a beautiful ceremony here with the children at Tally Middle School. Veterans Day is celebrating all living and past veterans who have served this country and protected their freedoms. Yeah, it's, it's, it's great to see the youth of our country engaged with us.
It is simply about giving back and saying thank you to people who have sacrificed for us. And I think that means more to me than almost anything else. So being able to do that in person, see the kids' faces, see the veterans' faces, and kind of see it all come back together again was very meaningful today.
I apologize for the sound issue. Our sound engineer, Mr. Reed, is, is out attending the DOE Lead-in Water Seminar Workshop Forum that's going on tonight. It's a beautiful video, and we will post it on our website so that you can enjoy it in the comfort and leisure of your home. It is a fantastic tribute to our, our veterans in our community. And I'd like to say thank you to the students in all the buildings who work so hard to, to honor those veterans. And again, thank the veterans on behalf of the entire Brandywine School District. I want to thank all the families who came out to our High School Visitation Day on November sixth. It was so great to see our families back at this event in person. In all, we had hundreds of families attend these three events. All three high schools did a phenomenal job showcasing their academic programs, athletic offerings, pathway programs, and so much more. Want to share a special thank you to the staff members and the current students who planned, participated in these events to ensure our prospective families could truly see our buildings in action. I'd also like to thank the families who participated in our Choice Information Night last week. It was great to see so many families engaged and waiting to learn more about the school choice process. It was also great to see some of our families begin their applications at the event using the Chromebooks that were on hand. The school choice application window is now open. We have lots of information and resources on our website if you want to learn more. Throughout the district, we've had many opportunities for students to share their voice. One of the ongoing initiatives that recently launched is called Up for Learning. These sessions include students from all three BSD high schools alongside leaders throughout our schools and district, collaborating in discussions to help build a stronger BSD community. These sessions provide opportunities for our students to use their voice, to share their insights, while engaging in youth-adult partnerships. Feedback from the first event was incredibly positive, and we're looking forward to future collaboration sessions. In addition, Dr. Lawson and I have launched a series of lunch meetings with elementary, middle, and high school students to informally discuss issues and concerns from our students' perspectives, an initiative that is contained in the new district success plan. The performing arts continue to shine throughout the district. In the center of your screen is Concord High School's Golden Raider Marching Band. They finished their 2022 Competitive Marching Season, Season at the Cavalcade of Bands Championships at Hershey Stadium this past weekend. Concord had a strong fifth grade, sorry, fifth place finish in their division. Congratulations to the band and their director, Gillian Bacon. On the left-hand side of the screen are images from Brandywine High School's Fall Play entitled "Bad Auditions by Bad Actors." And on the right-hand side of the screen are images from Tally Middle School's Neon Art Event and Tally's Got Talent Competition, which took place all in the same evening. Throughout our district, at each and every one of our schools, you can be sure there's something incredibly creative taking place when it comes to the visual and performing arts. We also have a few special highlights related to our athletics. On your screen on the left is Mount Pleasant High School's Courtney McDermott, who goes by CJ. Last week, CJ signed a letter of intent to throw shot put and discus for the University of Rhode Island, a Division One school. He'll be studying chemical engineering while he's there. Join us in congratulating CJ on such an amazing accomplishment. Meanwhile, on the right side of your screen are the high school student athletes who recently took part in the DIAA Leadership Conference. Student athletes spent the day learning about DIAA and their role in high school sports. DIAA reached out to the students for their input. Our students also sharpened their leadership skills and were tasked with bringing those skills back to their respective schools. Want to thank all of our students and athletic directors who took part in that conference. We were also able to catch up and enjoy a few other games this month. Flag football is back at some of our elementary schools. These pitchers, you can see Carcroft taking on Lombardi, an age-old rivalry. This game was played under the lights and was very well attended. We love seeing even our youngest students learning about sportsmanship and teamwork. We also captured an inner-district soccer game between Mount Pleasant and Brandywine High Schools. And at the middle school level, Brandywine School District recently hosted the inaugural Middle School Sports Day. Brandywine coach and mentor, Mr. Howard Laws, partnered with middle school athletic directors to create this special event. The event allowed the middle school students to play in championship games against other district schools. It also served as an opportunity to promote our High School Visitation Day and promote the athletic offerings at all of our BSD high schools. We'll be sharing a lot more coverage of this event on our BSD social media channels, so please make sure you visit and like our pages. As you may recall, last month, the school boards representing Brandywine, Christina, and Red Clay all unanimously voted to move forward with the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Initiative. Earlier this month, a special event was held at the Wilmington Public Library for the formal signing of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative Agreement. The Board Presidents for Brandywine, Christina, and Red Clay all signed the agreement alongside their superintendents and city board members. The event served as a formal recognition of the votes of all three school districts to move forward with this important work. We have a new celebrity in the house. Mount Pleasant Elementary's Principal, Matt Auerbach, was recently recognized by the Philadelphia Eagles as their 2022 Fan of the Year. Principal Auerbach had the surprise of a lifetime when he was interrupted during the school's morning announcements by cheerleaders and of course, Swoop to name him the Eagles 2022 Fan of the Year. Principal Auerbach is now in the running to be the 2022 NFL Fan of the Year, and he's competing against all the other team fan winners. Principal Auerbach said he would have joined us here tonight to share this recognition, but alas, he's at the Monday night game against the Washington Commanders. Join us in wishing Principal Auerbach luck. Join us in wishing Principal Auerbach luck in his quest to be the NFL Fan of the Year. There's been a lot happening throughout our district this past month. As always, this is just a small snapshot of the moments that we were fortunate enough to capture. At Concord High School, many of the student athletes worked together to fundraise for Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition. Students organized a car wash, bake sales to raise funds. The students even hosted a special check presentation with the Delaware Breast Cancer Coalition at the school. Also at Concord, one student had captured the hearts of people all across the state, the region, and the country. Cody Newton made national headlines when he attended a Phillies game on his own to honor his late father. The group sitting near Cody learned about his story and did everything they could to make his experience memorable. That turned into Cody going to all of the remaining home playoff games. Well, then that turned into Cody going to all of the World Series games, both in Philadelphia and in Houston. Cody brought Concord team members with him to the home games, including his health and PE teacher, Nina Pickhaver, as well as principal Mark Mayer. Hamby Elementary held a special night focused on reading called Scholastic Snuggles and Snacks. The event promoted literacy for our students and gave them the opportunity to bond over reading. Ahead of last week's Election Day, BSD students participated in mock elections. Mock elections were held on November 2nd and 3rd for BSD students in grades four through 12. The students did a great job showcasing their participation and how to be responsible voters. We also had the opportunity to thank all of our BSD principals during National Principals Month. Throughout our district, our schools marked the start of the fall season and the Halloween holiday in their own unique ways. This included costume parades with some of our high school marching bands in attendance, trick-or-treating, fall festivals, and more. It's great to see our school communities come together and have fun. Superheroes were definitely the most popular costume theme this year. Also want to take time to thank Chesapeake Regional Pharmacy for once again hosting a vaccine clinic for our students and community. More than 100 families participated in the most recent event. Like to thank the president's own Marine Marching Band for their recent performance at Mount Pleasant High School. It was an honor to once again host this event. Nearly 1,000 community members attended the performance. But that's not all. There's more, much more. Don't just take my word for it, but see for yourself. Keep your fingers crossed that the audio comes through.
I would like to thank all you guys for coming to the First Annual Brandywine School District Middle School Day at Mount Pleasant High School. Give yourself a round of applause. And this year's cross county district champion with 26 points, Tally Middle School.
Give yourself a big old hug.
Today, we are so excited to receive this donation from Operation Warm that works with BlackRock. They chose Harlan to give free coats and free shoes to every student in pre-K through grade three, making sure that we're doing all that we need to give the students what they need so that they can learn and grow and soar.
I don't know, Mr. President. I'm not sure I remember having that much fun back in elementary, middle, and high school. But isn't it great to see the smiles on our kids' faces and them having fun at school once again? It's so refreshing. And finally, I again want to express my gratitude and share another example of our incredibly generous community. This year, BlackRock chose Harlan Elementary School as the recipient for Operation Warm. As part of this initiative, every student from preschool through third grade received a new coat and a new pair of shoes. Students were elated and loved showing off their new items. You saw a little bit of that in the clip we just saw. Needless to say, we're grateful for our community partners and their generosity. Once again, I close my presentation with a simple message. It's easy to see why I am proud to be BSD, and that is my report for this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Any comments or questions from the board? Nope. Hearing none, we will move on to public comment. We ask that our speakers and audience members be courteous and respectful to each other. This is your time to be heard regarding topics related to the Brandywine School District. Each speaker will have two minutes, at which time the mic will cut, and we will thank you for your time in an effort to be fair to everyone. Think any Zoom speakers, Ms. Harris? No Zoom, only one speaker this evening, Mr. Richard James, if you could come to the microphone in the aisle. Pass. No speakers this evening. That will take us to Board Member Liaison Reports and Updates. DSBA Executive Board, Mr. Ackerman.
The DSP Executive Board met on November 2nd. We did have a quorum. We filled the vacant position for second vice president with Marcel Williams from the Sussex County Vocational Technical School District. We also reviewed the treasurer's report. I did send a copy of the minutes over to the superintendent, and you can put the rest of the minutes into the board docs for this week. We had some great discussions, and we were done by 8:45.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Ackerman. DSP Legislative Committee, Ms. Gordon.
DSP Legislative Committee did not meet this month, and we will not be meeting until February 1st, 2023.
Very well. Thank you, Ms. Gordon. District Finance Committee met on November 9th, where we discussed the monthly financial report and were introduced to the district's very new Ms. Jill Florrie. First time attending our, new CFO, first time attending our monthly Finance Committee meeting. So we are excited to hear her report later this evening under New Business. Our next meeting is scheduled for December 14th. Education Recruitment and Retention, Ms. Stock.
But yes, I wanted to give the community an update about the BSD Educator Recruitment and Retention Committee. As a summary of the advisory's work last year, we were looking into best practices from Hanover to kind of guide our plan of action. And we were really concentrating on the, there are four principles to increase recruitment and retention, including the following strategies: support teacher well-being, promote teacher engagement, create a supportive school climate, and monitor teacher attrition and retention. It has been decided that this committee will move from a board advisory committee to an internal committee. It is my understanding that this committee will still include a board member, but the goal will be to seek out more representation from educators throughout the district. The community will be asked in the near future to also be involved in this internal committee to some capacity. And I encourage anyone internally who is interested in serving on this committee can send me an email, and I can get those names to the person who will be managing the meetings in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stock.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can you share why, share the rationale behind making this particular committee an internal committee?
Mr. President, would you like to answer that question?
Yeah, I guess there's a couple reasons. I mean, we look at, I guess there's more administrative and curriculum or more personnel-factor decisions that would be best served focused on by a community of teachers and hearing from them directly as it relates to retention and recruitment. I think there will be times where we can reach out to the community for for input on specific areas, which is, I think, through the course of last year and the way some of the meetings had, were conducted, and just getting a more broad-spectrum representative of all of the schools in the district and, you know, a more teacher-centered approach with, you know, kind of an ad hoc community input from time to time.
So I guess why wasn't the, why wasn't there an attempt to, I guess, expand the committee opposed to? So one of the things, I think I've attended maybe two of those meetings, and I thought that one of the benefits was hearing from educators in a in a more unofficial approach. I'm not sure if making it an internal committee would would hinder or create a barrier for transparency on their part, meaning they may not feel comfortable as being, with being open as, as, as they were, or at least the meetings that I, that I attended. And I guess my question is, was that discussed? Was that considered and?
Considered expanding?
No, the impact of making it an internal committee versus an external.
And I think it's still in the process of who, because it'll all be volunteer. So, you know, my, my vision for the committee would be to begin with Teachers of the Year or Former Teachers of the Year within the last couple of years. Look to, to individuals who are already leaders within their school and have a rapport with their peers and can engage, you know, present ideas, rally, rally those around them to participate. And I think the committee can expand that way in the future. I think, I think where the committee was, there was no real structure in the participants. It was kind of a an open forum, people flow in and out. And I think if we're going to have a targeted goal of teacher recruitment and retention, I think we need a core group of individuals to work for a period of time, whether that be, you know, a one-year period to start. And I think that group will kind of look to where they want to go with it. But I just, I think as we're talking about recruitment and retention, I mean, that is a just seems to me that it is an internal function. It's not a, you know, when we're talking about the District Finance Committee, there is a community oversight piece that, you know, our finances are open to the public. We want, you know, community input as to how and where we're spending our money and oversight to an additional layer of accountability. I think when you're talking something so nuanced as, you know, teaching and education and all the requirements and roles and responsibilities that go within that, I don't think we should just open it to anyone and everyone in the community. I think it should be teacher-focused. And I think, you know, we had some attempts throughout last year with the structure of the committee, and it just, it didn't seem to grab, grab hold. So I think, you know, a new approach might be in order. Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
So we had a well-attended meeting on Thursday, October 20th. Now I'll just highlight some of the topics that were discussed. So we talked about nutrition and food waste and the USDA program that they currently have to try to reduce food waste in schools. And then that kind of circled into discussing the appeal of the menu to the students and how we can improve students' desire to eat school lunches, especially those that qualify for free or reduced meals. There's a discussion around athletic trainers and the availability of athletic trainers when there's multiple sports going on in multiple locations, and that led into a discussion about middle school athletic trainers and the lack of athletic trainers that were, that are available in the middle schools. And there was discussion on the concussion protocol and how that is implemented if a coach or trainer suspects that a student may have suffered a concussion during a game. There's a long discussion on a screening to identify students that might be at risk for suicide and other mental health issues and how that could be implemented throughout the district. There was a great discussion on the Wellness Center enrollment in the three high schools. So there's been an increase in students that are enrolled in the Wellness Center, but the discussion was about, we believe that most families might not be aware of all the services that are available to them through the Wellness Center. So currently, there's 41% of students from Mount Pleasant enrolled, 47% from Concord, 52% from Brandywine. I learned during that meeting what a valuable resource that is. So the committee is talking about ways to make sure that that's shared with families and how easy it is to enroll and take advantage of the resources provided by the Wellness Center. There's a lot of discussion on MTSS, Multi-Tier Assistance of Supports. The committee adopted a mission statement to guide what the committee is going to be doing in the future. And then there's a lot, there's a lot of other items that were put into the parking lot that are going to be added to the agenda for future meetings. The next meeting is going to be January 19th, and I will share these meeting notes with Ms. Harris, so she can put them in board docs for next week.
Great, thank you.
I have a question. I'm sorry. You had mentioned the middle school having athletic trainers. I guess one of the things that I've noticed as a parent is that middle school sports don't even necessarily have nurses present. They don't have an athletic trainer or a nurse. And so maybe that could be something that, it could either be one or the other, that somebody, especially if it's like two of our middle schools playing each other, that, you know, maybe you just have one medical personnel available.
Yeah, that was, that was actually part of the discussion is if there's the ability to offer EPR to nurses, even if they're not from that building, to come in and cover that. And Dr. Lawson was, was working on, between the athletic trainer piece and that for next week.
Maintenance Advisory Committee, Mr. Heller.
There was actually no meeting. The next meeting is tomorrow night at 5:00 PM at Claymont.
Claymont Elementary?
Yes.
Fantastic. Parents and Citizens Advisory Committee, Ms. Perry, Robyn Perry.
There was a principals' meeting held October the 19th where principals were charged to select new representatives for the PCAC. Follow-up will take place within the next month or so. Follow-up will take place within the next month or so.
Thank you. Parents Council for Students with Disabilities, Ms. Pigeon.
Yeah, so first I just want to say regarding the Maintenance Advisory Committee meeting, it's showing up on the district calendar. So, that's awesome. Thank you. I don't know if all of our other meetings are, but that's really helpful because I subscribe to the district calendar and so I received it. The notice of the meeting. So, regarding Parent Council for Students with Disabilities, we met on October 20th and discussed ways to connect the representatives with families within the school that the family represents. Members would like families to feel comfortable reaching out to them if they need any help or support. And flyers with the representative's contact information will be available through the Special Education Coordinators within each school. Council representatives are also working with building administrators on ways to get involved in, within each school. The next council meeting is on January 5th. And if parents have any concerns or topics for continued discussion to help improve services for students with disabilities, please reach out to building representatives and/or your special education coordinator to get their contact information. And a flyer will be coming out regarding Parent Council. With kind of the goals and, and additional information about the council.
Great, thank you. Wilmington Learning Collaborative, Reverend Perry.
The Wilmington Learning Collaborative has met three times over the last month. October the 28th, where the meeting was held with the superintendents and city board representatives. The MOU, as the superintendent previously stated, was signed on Tuesday, November the first. And then we reconvened last Thursday, November the 11th. Our meeting on last Thursday provided an update. We are officially a nonprofit. The documents were signed and submitted. Currently, the nonprofit is being held by the Secretary of Ed, which will later be transferred to the WLC Council. We also discussed possible visitation to the Springfield Empowerment Center. Three, two, two representatives from our district are currently there. Unfortunately, many of, actually none of the city board representatives were available to attend. But there will be another opportunity in February for us to visit. We also discussed three key positions. The, the executive director, the WLC council members, excuse me, the, the parent appointments and the student appointments. The consensus is the success of the executive director will be contingent upon, or the success of, excuse me, the success of the Wilmington Learning Collaborative will be largely contingent upon the success of the executive director. So, the actual job description is is, has not been finalized just yet. Each district or even each representative, I would say, expressed their their key, or what they thought was pertinent to a successful executive director. So, you can imagine that that was a robust conversation. We also discussed a particular timeline, which again has not been finalized. We do have a draft of the executive director position. We will reconvene within the next few weeks. A follow-up meeting has not been determined just yet. However, it, we are looking to post the position of the executive director on December the 15th. And we do understand that that is an aggressive timeline, however, we want to give kudos to the team for being flexible with the timelines. More information will be forthcoming regarding the WLC Council and student applications. Again, there are drafts for those and they will be posted at the appropriate times.
And is this the meeting on the 12:15? Is that the full WLC Council?
Excuse me?
The meeting on 12:15, is that a full WLC Council?
I'm sorry, 12:15 is the deadline or the, it's the timeline for when the position for the executive director will be posted. So, we do not have a, a next meeting. We don't have a date personally.
Okay. Superintendent, I would just ask that we kind of on our board docs for the weekly updates to the board, create a dedicated section for WLC important dates. And Reverend Perry, if you could provide the superintendent, meeting dates, public meeting, or public meeting dates of the WLC Board, just so the, the full board if
Absolutely.
want to attend or can, can do those updates. Thank you.
Reverend Perry, can I just add a clarification or two? Just for the, the board and more for the audience, a reminder that as part of the WLC collaborative, Brandywine will have one parent appointed on the council. A current parent at Harlan Elementary, the only school we have in the collaborative. And that three students, one from each district, will be board members, one being a voting board member. We aren't sure whether our board member will be the 10th grader, the 11th grader, or the 12th grader. Brandywine's unique in the fact that we only have one school in the collaborative. There might have been twenty-five, twenty students in that fifth grade class, or maybe forty. But because of children moving, the selection of students is going to be a little bit more challenging for Brandywine than, than it would Red Clay or Colonial. And that's the application process that Reverend Perry was, was referencing. So, we'll be sending out information to Harlan parents to see, gauge their interest. We'll be working with Ms. Roberts. And then we'll also be working with Mr. Rivera to help identify those possible students at the high school level who would be the appropriate student representative from Brandywine on that, that council.
Great, thank you, Superintendent. Ninety-one seven WMPH Advisory Committee. We had our last meeting on Monday, November 7th. WMPH has been broadcasting 24/7 as normal through the period since our last meeting. Level-three students continue to produce or have just produced some new carline conversations where students interview employees within the district and select some songs, get some background information, and that gets aired. I believe during, during the morning and afternoon drop-off and pick-off time, pickup times. The WMPH After School Club is still popular. Currently, anywhere between six to 10 kids participate each week. And I know last month we discussed the expiration of the agreement with Delaware Public Media. So, beginning November 1st, WMPH is now more music mornings. We continue to have conversations with DPM. If we can find a way to draft a new agreement, that door is always open on both parts, and they expressed an interest of continuing to look for an opportunity for students to participate in some internships in the spring. There were some technical conversations, FCC items. The WMPH broadcast license is renewed until 2030. That was it. Our next meeting won't be until after the first of the year. I'll provide a date when we have that. But just to, you know, anyone here in the room tonight listening on Zoom, you know, riding around town, I tend to listen to ninety-one seven because obviously vested interest in the district. But I happen to be listening to some satellite radio and local stations and just struck me again how repetitive the song selections are. So, if you're out riding around in your car, flip on ninety-one seven WMPH. It's a nice variety of music and student-produced content. So, thank you. Any additional board member reports, comments, or questions?
Just one short thing. I probably could have included it in Health and Wellness, but Superintendent Holder hinted at what the Counseling Department here at Brandywine High School is doing. So, through the Health and Wellness Committee, I had the opportunity just today to attend their school counseling advisory council meeting. And I, I do want to encourage that we have Ms. Street or other members of the team come present what they're doing. So, they have a really unique model with the way that they've divided up the team in the Counseling Department. Just one stat that I learned today that I wanted to share. So, from June of 2021 to June of 2022, because of this change in the way that they're dividing up responsibilities, the team was able to increase applications or commitments to post-high school for graduates from seventy-four percent in June of 2021 to ninety-two percent in June of 2022. And they attribute that mostly to the unique way that they're allocating those resources and dividing up responsibility. So, I think it would be great for us to see a presentation on how that came to be and how it's working out and how we can share that model with the other high schools.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Heller.
Can I add to that? That I also recently learned that here at Brandywine High School, the C3 program, which is what they call the College Career Counseling Department, they're going, it's just kind of very early stages of planning, but they're going to be having a alumni college fair. So, they're going to be inviting alumni back to the school and having a college fair and having the alumni host the table of the college that they're currently attending for current students. That's kind of a fun thing that they're going to be trying out.
And that's Monday, December 19th at 6:30. Alumni College and Career Fair.
And that's here at Brandywine?
Here, yeah.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Pigeon. Thank you, Mr. Heller. All right. Moving on, I'll now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say, or any discussion? Oh, not on the consent agenda. Sorry. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the monthly personnel report as discussed in executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to accept student matters? Choice application invitations and denials as discussed in exec session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to old business regarding policy 05.02, student technology use. Second read, Ms. Staker.
Mrs. Staker couldn't make it this evening, but I'll follow up on the comments from the board last meeting when the first read was presented. There was some confusion around the use of students' devices on the network. A rewrite was submitted. It's in board docs. It, it separates out. When we talk about content filtering, there's actually two types. One is everybody in this room who has a device that is their personal device, you can access a subnet of the district and state network through our guest net. And you are subject to content filtering through the state firewall. If you have a district-issued device and you use it in the school, in the auditorium, same applies. You would be bound by the, the state firewall, that form of content filtering. Students who have a district-issued Chromebook, iPad, et cetera, they are subject to a separate, well, no, not separate, individual, an additional, I guess is the word. They would still be subject to the state firewall, whether they were here at home is where the district content filtering applies. So, wherever they take their district-issued device, we have the ability to put content filtering in place. So, it applies if they're at school on the district-state network, if they're at home on their, their own network at home, if they're on a private network, a public network, wherever they access the internet on that district-issued device, we have content filtering in place to keep them safe. Again, if they have their personal cell phones, that same level of protection is not there. It's still a level of protection because they're subject to the district firewall when they access our network. So, hopefully that's spelled out in that rewrite. It's actually two types. And we had to, to address both of those based on that grant that we received. We got $2.6 million in ECF funding, you may remember about a year ago. And last spring, early summer, Ms. Staker announced a, a second round of funding in which she was able to procure another $1.2 million for our district. And in order to receive those funds, our policy has to clearly spell out that we have that content filtering in place on our district-issued devices, no matter whether used at school, home, or anywhere else when they're accessing the internet.
Thank you, Mr. Holder. So, everybody on the board has received a copy of the revised revised policy. Do I have a motion to accept policy 05.02 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That'll take us on to new business. Proposed BSD and BEA Joint Resolution Regarding Pre-K Funding. Dr. Lawson?
Good evening. Good evening. Presidents, Rob, Vice President, Heller, members of the board, Superintendent Holder. You have a resolution before you for your consideration. DSEA reached out. Thanks.
DSEA Executive Board reached out to various districts, representatives from districts, as well as their education association members in those respective districts, asking to put before the Boards of Education this proposed resolution that's in front of you. House Bill 86, which would reduce the pre-K basic funding ratio of teachers to students from 12.8 to 8.4 was passed by both the House and the Senate last year during legislative session. For whatever reason, certainly there were a lot of bills associated with funding and money that one particular bill did not move forward. So, at this time, DSEA as a parent organization of BEA, and if you recall last month, Ms. Jeanette Wilt was here on behalf of both BEA and DSEA. She serves as an executive member, asking for board member support in this, in the signing of this resolution. She reached out to me and of course, as a longtime member of the state early childhood committees in Delaware and part of the early childhood task force, this is something that we can absolutely get behind and support. Because if you read in the resolution, our current ratios for teachers to students doesn't even meet the Office of Childcare Licensing regulations. They need to be much lower for our young children. And right now, it takes 12.8 students, pre-K students, to earn one teacher who are coded basic. So, Office of Childcare Licensing, without even considering disability, their ratios for three-year-olds, as an example, are one to, to 10. Again, we have the 12.8 and we're looking to reduce that. So, that resolution is before you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Dr. Wilson, who, who put this together for our district? Because I, as I look
Dr. Wilson, who, who put this together for our district? Because I, as I look at it, um, a couple of things strike me. One is just that I don't know where we would get this resolution number from, twenty twenty-two dash one, 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 four. That, that certainly has something to do with Brandywine. Um, on page three, there's basically two blanks. School District Governing Board name that have not been completed.
Correct.
Um, we don't do a chair. We do a president, vice president, and then members. So is, is that all going to be cleaned up? Cause I can get behind the, what's being presented here, but it, it's not, it's not done real well in terms of, um, being put together properly.
Correct. So this is what was provided to us by the Executive Board of D S E A. We certainly didn't want to assume that you all were just going to approve it. So yes, we would align those things. Now, in terms of the resolution number, I'm not sure. You know, whether that, I'm not sure whether that number, that specific indication needs to stay for some reason for their submission to the Department of Education, but we could certainly align it with our own numbers. Um, and I can reach out to, uh, Jeanette, Ms. Wilt and ask if that can remain or whether it can be removed. But yes, certainly we would, um, we would make sure that this was representative of Brandywine.
So would we vote on that next month then?
It's
That or how, how would you like that done?
Well, it's completely up to you. Um, I know that Ms. Wilt was here last month. I actually thought, um, and I'm not sure when exactly it was put in board docs. So if it, if it needs some time for everyone to read it, that's perfectly fine. I, I actually don't even think there's necessarily a timeline on this. Legislative session doesn't start until next year. But again, these bills had, this bill in particular was already passed. It's just a question of when it's going to be moved forward, signed by the governor, and then actually acted upon. Um, but you know, as you know, our unit count funding system is, um, costing the state a little bit more money than they had originally anticipated when it was passed about a decade ago.
I think, Mr. Ackerman, I think we have, somebody wanted to make a motion, um, you know, subject to the aligning of the resolution number and some modest corrections, uh, regarding names and titles. We could do that. Or if someone wanted to make a motion to, uh, make this a first read and move it to December, we could do that as well.
I, I'd like to make it a first read, just so I can go ahead and read back through it. Um, but I, 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 I'm in, I'm in support.
So is that a motion to?
That's a motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to make this a first read, move it to December's calendar, and we have a second for Mr. Heller. Any further discussion?
Yeah, um, I, some clarification. So House Bill eighty-six was already passed, but not implemented?
Correct. It was passed by both the House and Senate last year. And then it needs to be then signed by the governor and moved forward, um, probably to O M B. And probably Ms. Florrie could explain a little bit better about how that process works. So even if bills are passed by both the House and Senate, sometimes they, they don't move forward right away.
Um, so I think on, on the bottom of page one, then the language is maybe incorrect. Um, it says that the House Bill eighty-six was signed into law.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty twenty, but it wasn't, right? So it ju- it just passed both houses, but it wasn't signed into law.
Well, it, it may have been, uh, a- again, it says when fully implemented. So it's there is, and again, I, I'm not sure if someone else can explain it better than me in terms of what happens between both House and Senate passing it, or it looks like then perhaps it was signed into law, but it did not move forward in the unit count system. Because we are still being funded at one to twelve point eight this year at Bush for basic students.
Yeah, my understanding it was passed and signed, but not funded, which the funding piece is the key.
Yeah.
That needs to happen with lots of education legislation. So we have a motion. We have a second. Uh, I'll just add that, you know, certainly, I, I know I absolutely support this resolution. Um, you know, so if it's just a matter of, of cleaning up some of the, the verbiage, uh, we will certainly bring this back next month.
So I, I just have
Perhaps put it on, you know, like Brandywine letterhead or in some kind of a nice resolution paper type form.
We can do that. And we'll give it a full, uh, we'll give it a full read at that time on the agenda.
Absolutely, absolutely. I just have something to add. Thank you to whoever put this together and to the early education group, work group that has worked on this. Um, I appreciate it. And, um, I'm left off of it. So when you rewrite it, just, I'd like to be included.
I apologize for that, Ms. Pigeon, and I will make sure that this document is perfect and ready to go for
No worries.
For next month.
Any further discussion? Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. See you next month, Dr. Lawson. New business eleven B, um, Ms. Joe Florrie, our new CFO, monthly financial report. Couldn't convince Angie to do it one more time?
I thought she deserved a break. Does that work? Yes, it does work?
Yeah.
Little spotty, okay. Um,
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, members of the board, um, Superintendent and my colleagues for the first time. Thank you all for welcoming me. Um, I, I'm sorry I sound funny tonight. I have a cold. Um, so I get to join that with my, uh, my first meeting, but I blame my children, not the district, I swear. Um, Angie and I worked on this together and I can't, uh, start by saying, uh, or without saying a huge thanks to Angie and the staff uh, in the business office for welcoming me and doing such a great job, um, and filling in, um, you know, with Jason's departure and filling the position. So I do thank all of them, but in particular Angie for all she, um, did in, in the time in between. Um, for the first report, you can actually go to the next page. For the first, so I've been here three weeks and one day. Um, I'm by no means an expert yet. Um, but, uh, what I will say is, um, the, the committee graciously um, gave me a little bit of leeway in the first meeting because it was somewhat brazen, but I rearranged the report. Um, and, and I did it because there's not a lot of time between now and when the final budget has to be presented. But the, the, to me, the board-approved budget is the roadmap and it's what you all set as the funding plan moving forward. And so to make most immediate sense of it, where, where we are, um, in terms of finances, you can actually go back one. But in terms of where we are in finances, I just matched this report directly to the budget. And so you can see section by section where it's tracking. Um, the report itself, local funds are ninety-four point seven percent received because of when September taxes are due on September thirtieth. That's exactly where we would expect to be this time of year. Um, on the state side, eighty-three point three percent. Um, and then on the expended side, thirty-four point four seven, again, where you would expect to be at the end of October. Um, so nothing was really askew. It was just, um, my way of kind of organizing to track to the budget, which I'm in the process of trying to quickly get up to speed, um, to present to you for the January meeting. Um, but then it just buckets the categories by tax area, right? There's a tuition category. There's a, um, the, the matching category, the debt service category. And so we walk through this, um, with the, um, I walked through this with the committee and, um, and Mr. Hanby, the Chair of the Committee, has been incredibly gracious and is going to come meet with me, um, and talk about, um, the, the committee moving forward and any ideas that we can kind of, um, put in play, um, short term and long term. But, um, but he's been very gracious as well. He couldn't be here tonight. Um, so that's on the revenues and expense side. Um, we went through a little bit on the, on the cash flow, didn't spend um, an incredible amount of time on that, but it, it, we certainly are, um, I can say three weeks and one day and there was no, there have been no major red flags. There's, um, you know, certainly solid position. There, uh, you know, the immediate things in working on are S R reconciliation, the September thirtieth unit count, putting those, um, final allocations into play to present to you a final budget. Um, and then working on some, uh, procedures, internal procedures in the business office to share, um, with staff. I know there was some discussion about the um, local funds audit, uh, that came out. And so just having those procedures. Um, and again, uh, no red flags that I saw with that, minor procedural things that had already been taken care of, but things we can clarify for both the business office staff and all of the, um, school level staff and administrators, um, uh, for the future. So that's where, that's where I am in, uh, probably three minutes or less after three weeks. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
No, I just, I think for the, for the benefit of the board, I think, um, it was good the way you kind of introduced yourself to the committee. And that, you know, I know you and Dr. Hale were colleagues for a number of years, both have mutual respect for each other. And, you know, when you do things for a long time and someone new comes in, I, I, I welcome the change for your approach, your explanation, your expertise. And, you know, certainly the board, you know, is, is never afraid to ask questions or reach out to you directly uh, for budgetary questions. Um, so, you know, thank you for the three weeks that you've put in. And, you know, we'll be looking forward to, you know, your approach, your highlights and, you know, getting, getting used to your format and your delivery. So thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from the board? So do I have a motion to accept the monthly financial report, subject audit?
Some moved, some moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. General information and meeting dates. We have a board workshop scheduled for November twenty-eighth. The Mount Pleasant Elementary Multipurpose Room, uh, followed by our December board meeting on December twelfth here at Brandywine High School. And our first meeting of the new year will be January ninth. It's an early one. January ninth, twenty twenty-three here at Brandywine High School. Any final comments or questions, comments from the board? No? Hearing none. Uh, thank you everyone for your time and participation this evening. I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.